Okay. Horse trading, I love it. Well, I see it as five o'clock, folks, so we're going to go ahead and get started. This is the fourth meeting of the one hundred and forty-third Council of the Corporation of Saint, of the City of Saint Thomas, and is there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none, minutes.
Your worship, I have a motion that the minutes of the meetings held on December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two be confirmed. Moved by Counsel Peter, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none on the minutes, all those in favor. Any opposed? Carry.
Counsel will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to an application by Y W C A of Saint Thomas Algen for proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for the property at twenty-one Kane Street. I have a motion that report P D fifty-eight twenty-two relating to the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments for twenty-one Kane Street. Be received for information and for council authorized staff to prepare site-specific draft amendments to the Saint Thomas official plan in zoning bylaw fifty-eight eight to permit a proposed residential development on lands which may be described as part lot thirty-four, lots thirty-five to forty-three, and unnumbered lot plan eighty-four, part lot seventeen on plan forty-three, and part lot London Airport Stanley Railway Block in the city, and further that a public meeting be scheduled for January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. In accordance with Ontario Regulations five forty-three slash oh six and five forty-five slash oh six as amended. Moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Counsel Clark, sorry, couldn't get that out. Counselor Clark.
Thank you. The map, that's color-coded for us there. It's hard to read because it's so small. I'm just wondering which of those buildings will be the two-story buildings? If they, I'm assuming it's blue and salmon, but I'm not sure.
Can I have Mr. McCombe, please, and
help us out, please? Thank you, worship, through you. I don't have a large copy of the plan. I can certainly provide you with a clear PDF version, if you like, so that you can see in more detail exactly how these are all laid out. Generally, if you look at the houses that are proposed to go along the East River boundary, the ones that are set back further, the seven-meter setback are the two-story, and if they're a little bit closer, the five-meter setback, then those are one-story dwellings. So they've set up everything so that that acts like a rear yard because of the extra distance, although it's actually an interior side yard. But I can provide members of council with a more detailed PDF that's a little clearer. I appreciate the fact that, you know, copy it onto the onto the report like that. You do lose some of the details, so I can pass that on to council.
Yeah, that'd be great. Had some neighbors just wondering whether where the two stories were going, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, and that would be covered also in public meeting? Yes. Counsel Peters?
Thanks, worship. A couple of questions. One, is this a, is this going to be a city street coming on to this property, or is this a private road? And if it's a private road, are we going to, I realize this is probably a site plan issue, but it's going to come up. Is this going to be like Princess Ave where late, retroactively, we're going to have people requesting garbage pickup? So, one, is this a city street or is it a private road? Secondly, the, when I look at the, and I recognize as well that it's only a draft of the trail route. I just want to ensure that if the trail is extended northerly, that will in no way, shape interfere when the day comes that we get the railway tracks put back in. And as well, just to be sure, if the railway tracks go back in, how do we avoid potential complaints from residents who may not like a train running through their backyard?
I can take a little bit of that last one. The whistle-stop trail has the train running right beside it, right beside, behind residential properties out.
I mean the new houses, though.
Thank you, your worship. To Counselor Peters. So the road going into this development will be a private road. It acts essentially more like a driveway than a road. It just accesses the parking. There is a area that will extend back that will be reinforced for, and that's really just for when people move in, so they can get a truck back there to unload and then come back out. But it is essentially a driveway is what it is. With respect to the city-owned trail, as part of the development, they did do a noise and vibration analysis. So measures will be incorporated into the construction of the dwellings. No different than the, say, the condos on Princess Ave or other developments, or the one on Elm Street that backs onto the trail. So very similar to those. So there will be measures incorporated into it to prevent any adverse impacts to the people living there as best we can, we can manage.
And can I ask the question on trash? Garbage pickup problem we had on Princess, or at least the request we had on Princess. Will this be an onsite dumpster situation? I'd assume that's what it, what it is. And just really small print for me to figure out that one of those things is saying garbage dumpster.
Yeah, thank you, worship. There is on the site plan, I haven't got it in front of me, but I believe there's an area where they have the three streams collection area. It would be handled as part of a site plan issue, but I believe, Nathan, there is a spot-on site that they're going to have the three streams.
Sure, perfect. Counsel, or Counsel Peters, did that answer yours? Yes. Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Seriously, Jim, is there enough parking for each unit? Would that be a problem if you had to have more than two cars or one car, or is there enough room for each unit? That was my original question.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Counsel Herbert. There isn't, the parking ratio is about point six. And the reason for that is this is being specifically designed as an affordable housing development complex. And the city's affordable housing strategy does recommend that, you know, providing relief on parking requirements is one way to help to encourage affordable housing. So they're seeking this because a lot of the clients that are going to have living in this place will not have cars. They will rely on public transportation. So we think that the amount of parking that's being provided will be enough for the development.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Gibson.
I guess, I was just wondering, I was just noticing on the map, you're widening the street. Our street's going to be widened in that area there. So we're all, I've already received a couple complaints when people are trying to cross the sidewalk to go onto the trail across Canes. So we're just wondering, I was just wondering if maybe we could maybe have larger signage to warn people that it is a trail crossing there, coming from the sidewalk of crossing Canes. If, I don't know how wide the street is going to be from point A to point B along that section, but if it's in front of that trail, maybe we should consider making sure we have pedestrian warnings. Thank you.
Okay. The trails will meet each other. Perhaps it's a spot for another crosswalk, but we'll deal with that, I guess, at that time. Mr. McCombe, question, answer on that? Okay, good.
No, your worship. I don't have a response to it. Manager Development and Compliance is here. Perhaps he might have a comment.
Please. We have all the right experts in the room tonight. This is perfect.
There, your worship, to Counsel Gibson. Yeah, so Kane Street was pushed back a couple of years for reconstruction, so we definitely can look at a possibility of incorporating a pedestrian crossing there at that time. From the last iteration, I'm not exactly sure, but we can give a better answer if you, if you like, so.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next report is the third report of the two thousand and twenty-two Site Plan Control Committee. I have a motion that report P D fifty-seven twenty-two relating to site plan application numbers S P C O nine twenty-two and S P C ten twenty-two. Be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Your worship, no further items under this committee unless there are any items from the members.
Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. Through you, if I could seek support from council to ask for a staff report to introduce a bylaw moving forward for residential units, whether they be private or public development, include E V charging stations, whether they be in the garage or onsite, and that will help us prepare for two thousand and thirty as it is fast approaching, and some of these residential units that will be started over the next year or two are going to be very close to that two thousand and thirty threshold. So I'm hoping to ask for council support to request that from staff. Thank you.
So at this point, we're looking just for a report from staff about, to discuss with our builders. Okay? Counsel Wookiee? Ask for the report from staff? That's great. It's direction from us to have a report come back with the discussion with them on the charging stations as part of new developments. Further items on this committee?
Seeing none, your worship, will now move into community engagement and services. There's nothing shown on the agenda at this time unless there are any items from the members. Your worship, seeing none, will move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to the Northwest Area Sanitary Servicing Project Update. I have a motion that report E S seventy-nine twenty-two relating to Northwest Area One Sanitary Servicing Project Update. Be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments of the report? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members.
Counsel Wookiee has an item.
Thank you very much on civic operations. I'd like to get, ask Mr. Bray to just do a little bit of commentary about ice fishing on Lake Margaret and where we're at with that. I'm hoping that it won't happen this winter, frankly, because I, you know, I'm kind of had it with winter, but if we do get some snow and some ice, now, I don't know if he is on the call or.
No. Okay. We're going to ask for him to report back at the next meeting.
I can just, I'll just ask it on our new business the next meeting. I'll just get him to do that. Thank you very much.
Anything else under infrastructure and civic operations? Oh, okay.
Your worship will now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election accessibility. Have motion that report C C fifteen twenty-two relating to the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election accessibility. Be received for information. Moved by Counsel Herbert, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election results. I have a motion that report C C sixteen twenty-two relating to the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election results. Be received for information. Moved by Counsel Peter, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters first. Clark?
Thanks very much, worship, and thanks to the clerk for the report. It was very revealing. I think one of the things that struck me is the very generation that people thought wouldn't vote, utilizing technology, did vote, and the generation that you would have thought would have utilized technology didn't. But it was a, it was a very, it was a very good report, and I thank you for that. And my, my comment is, though, you know, our municipality isn't unique than any others in experiencing this downward trend of voter turnout. And I would propose that council perhaps consider, we can have this discussion in the new year, maybe the clerk could report back to us about what other municipalities are doing, but striking an ad hoc committee that could look at what we could do collectively, not just us as a council, but as a community, to help re-engage the public. You know, I know there's a civics program in grade five. There's another civics program, I think, in grade ten or eleven. And that's just one example, but to, to see what we could do to turn around and encourage a better public participation in the, in the next election. I have to admit, one of the things that I struggled with changing was doing away with the mark-your-X piece of paper ballot. And when I look at this report, I don't think too many people were intimidated at all, be it, I did see on social media a number of concerns were expressed, but I don't know, I just proposed this that maybe we could, we could have another further discussion on this in the new year. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you. I have Counsel Clark next.
Yeah, I had a similar idea, whether or not we could have a committee or at least a survey and just trying to find out what, what the reasons were why people of different age groups maybe didn't vote, and but I like Counsel Peter's idea of going, taking a step forward, further and being proactive and, and maybe address it through a committee.
Okay. Counsel Herbert, you're next.
Thank you, worship. I, I found it interesting with the, the new technology that the majority of the vote is waited still to the last day to vote. They could have voted two weeks before on that. So I just found that kind of interesting. No matter what you offer, they still want to vote the last day. So, anyway, I just found it interesting. Thank you.
Counsel Baldwin Sands?
Thank you very much. I would like to commend the clerk on the very, very thorough report that we have in front of us tonight. I, on the day immediately after the election, noting that the very low turnout, not just for this municipality, but province-wide, did a straw poll and found that the respondents on my Facebook page using social media, they were very, very pleased with being able to vote by internet and by phone. I had one on there responding that they still prefer the paper ballot. There were several comments on how fast and easy internet voting was. And I did, after that, receive one comment from a homeowner in the community that they felt that when the voting letter arrived with their PIN number, they didn't quite know what it was. They looked at it both sides and threw it in the mail. They thought it was a reminder notice to vote, and they ended up tossing it out without understanding that they still could have gone to one of the sites on voting day, on the twenty, the specific date that we set aside for that. I was also really concerned about the number of, the lack thereof, of how many, under the age of forty-five, actually voted in the election. And I agree with Counsel Peters, not just with what we are talking about in the civics classes. I even highly recommend that part of the commitment that we make here around this table is that make ourselves available to grade-ten civics classes and make ourselves available to be regular guests at the high school so that they understand that there is a level of engagement that is really essential for youth to become involved more responsibly in the civic process. And I also think that there is opportunity to strike the committee, so whether we talk about communications and enhancing our communications here at City Hall, our own personal Facebook pages, an opportunity to keep that conversation going. What you had done with your mayor's updates, et cetera, in order to keep that engagement level actively moving throughout an election cycle. There are many opportunities. I do like the internet, and I do like the phone voting system because it did allow a certain level of engagement. But we need to have a discussion on how we can do better, and I think that's very important moving forward, especially for those under the age of forty-five who did not show up to the polls. Thank you.
Counsel Wookiee?
Thank you, worship. Couple, a couple of things about, one thing and then a question. There's been a great discussion in the Western world about lowering the voting age from eighteen to sixteen, and grade-ten civics, you are fifteen going on sixteen. And I can tell you, after thirty years of teaching, I ran across a lot of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds who had an educated opinion and a very rational opinion about who should be elected. And although that is outside of our purview, obviously, I would like to say that if you want to engage sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, allowing them to vote, to vote would be item number one. And I can tell you upon my thousands of cases of teaching students that there, the average seventeen-year-old and the average forty-year-old understand things equitably in terms of what's going on in the world. The second one is kind of a question comment for the clerk. One of the challenges is, I think, for people under forty-five who rent, is oftentimes they did not get pins because I understand it's MPAC that does the notifications. And, and so there were people still getting notifications at their house for kids that moved out ten years before. I think largely that's because they've not bought a property in anyplace else. So as far as MPAC's concerned, MPAC has no idea where they are. And, and I'm hoping that the clerk can make a comment because I believe that in the next election cycle, we will, MPAC will be relieved of that responsibility, and it will be the provincial database, which it makes perfect sense, which has your health card and et cetera, et cetera, as your address. So I'm hoping to get some clarification maybe from the clerk, whether that's going to happen, because I think in terms of lack of voter turnout, I mean, if you didn't have a PIN number, if you didn't have a PIN number, then you now are going searching, and you're the exact generation who are, you might have young kids, or you might be working shift work, or you've got about fifteen other concerns other than who you're going to vote for, for city council. Anyway, thanks, Maria, if you could talk about that.
Thank you, worship. Yes, apparently in the year two thousand and twenty-four, the provincial database will be used. And as we all know, the voting list is only as good as the information that's placed in it. We've worked on it all year to, to work as best we can. We've contacted large apartment buildings, thrown in flyers, sent letters to all city-owned property tenants. But you're right, as far as children that no longer live with their parents because it's ten years or twenty years beyond that time. It's frustrating that they're still on the list, even though they have taken themselves off. And, you know, we try our best to, to get the tenants. It would be terrific if we were able to capture that particular group, and only then can you tell, did they really want to vote? You know, we try and make it as accessible and as easy as possible for everyone. So we're quite looking forward to two thousand and twenty-four when that database is going to be as up-to-date as possible.
Am I right, Madam Clerk? That two thousand and twenty-four, they make it available, will be used for a two thousand and twenty-five provincial election, and we follow shortly after in two thousand and twenty-six. So the list will even have been, have had a provincial test about.
Your worship, you're, you're correct. So any changes that have been made will have been updated either from the changes we've made, from the recent provincial government election, and so our information will be maybe only a year old. That would be terrific instead of twenty years old, as we have noticed in some cases.
Great. Further questions or comments? Counsel Kohler, I was going to get there. I just, I knew I would.
Thanks, thanks, your worship. Most of my concerns were already, already brought up, and I look forward to, if, if there is going to be a committee, because the only thing that I heard throughout this is, and I don't know what percentage is, is about people said they weren't going to vote because we did not have the paper ballot. But I, I think I have a gut feeling that it's a low percentage, but my concern is that going all the way back to where we were trying to get voter turnout increased by making it easier, by going to internet and telephone, it seemed to have just gone the other way. And this, this time here, I've heard everybody that voted, that has talked to me, that used the internet or phone, said how easy it was and how accessible it was, and they just loved it. But there was still the few people that called and said, it's the first time ever they're not going to vote because of the paper ballot. And it'd be just interesting to know what the percentage of that is, because it, it seems the easier we make it, the less people take advantage of it, and that's, that's my only concern, right? But at, at the end of the day, other than echoing Counsel Baldwin Sands about the voter, the card when it came out, I too heard a lot of people that didn't know what it was, misplaced it, didn't have it, and then were scrambling around at the end, and I guess it would only make it easier for us at the end if, if it was identified a little bit better. But other than that, the majority of the people that talked to me were, were happy about it, but we did still have those few people that wanted that, that paper ballot and the ability to exercise their vote that way.
Counsel Herbert? Thank you, worship. I was out into some of the new subdivisions, and some of the questions they were asking me was, I bought here six months ago and moved, am I automatically on the voters' list? Or, and secondly, how do I find out? And I, I sent them off to customer service, but are they automatically on the voters' list once they buy? Buy in Saint Thomas? I don't know how that works. I didn't have the answer for him, so.
Madam Clerk?
Your worship, we received the preliminary list of electors from MPAC in August. So if they had purchased the property and the transaction had occurred, then MPAC would have a record of it. They receive a record from the building division. If they moved in or purchased the property after that time, then they need to make their changes to the voters' list directly with the clerk's department. So we're, we're not sure if there are people that have been missed, and I believe that's why we were updating through this media, medium, through council meetings and on social media, in the newspaper, to try and capture those people that may have just moved in from out of town and were not on the list quite yet.
Just a follow-up question. Maria, did you get a lot of people asking if they're on the voters' list? Because I sent a lot of people to the customer service. Would you, would you have had a lot of calls?
Madam Clerk?
Your worship, so we did have an electronic version available. They could check on the website. And prior to September first, any electors were able to actually go on MPAC's website, voter lookup.ca, that was available all year up until August. I, I don't think we had a lot of people inquiring with customer service because if they went on the website, they could check that way. But we did have a number that checked, and we were happy that they did because if there's any discrepancies, if there is an age anomaly, then we're able to print out another voter information letter for them to use.
Further questions or comments? If I could add from the chair, Madam Clerk, are you keeping a record of, this great report will be, will be suffice, will suffice, but of other comments that we've, we received on the voting system. As I see it, there's two different issues. One is on the voting system. Will it, will it, with a better voter database, be better for us? All right. And I think this council will need to look at that in about two thousand and twenty-four before we head within two years of the next election. But as Counsel Peters has brought up, there's also the issue of, what do you do to stimulate voter turnout? Now, we could be way more controversial, and that will probably cause it, but I don't think that's our plan. But again, Counsel Baldwin Sands brought it up, and I think Counsel Peters brought it up, too. Look, we're asked often to go speak to students on this issue, and if we, and if we say yes, then that at least helps the awareness factor of what it is. So I challenge you all, I'll, I'll always continue to go, we had a, this room was full of a group of grade-fives one day. And the clerk did a great job of presenting what a clerk does, too. But, but we'll continue to do that. Grade five and grade, grade ten are the two, two places where civics hits. Let's, let's all challenge ourselves to do that, too. But if we can come up with another public relationship, public meeting, public awareness, public transparency piece to convince people that civil government, civic government has a purpose in their life, that's what will get them out to vote. So I'll look for both of those as we move forward. Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Would this be something we would contact Thames Valley and see we could maybe put something together that they would support?
I suppose that, 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 that's not a hardship, but we need to really contact the history departments of each of the schools on that case and say, we're available. What day do you need us? So let's do it. Yes. I'll, I'll take charge of that, Jim, if you'd like. I'll make sure that all of the school boards know that we're willing and able to do it.
Your worship, I've just to add, so we don't sort of lose this tonight, because it's been a wonderful discussion that perhaps the clerk could, I, I know there was a voter engagement program in, in the city administrators' old area in Gray Bruce, up in the Owen Sound area. There was a, I heard it on CBC Radio one day, and perhaps if the clerk could just, municipalities, but it would, it really One day and perhaps if the clerk could just municipalities, but it would, I really would like to see this discussion continue in the new year.
Madam Clerk, uh, before you answer that, is there kind of a pooling of information? Many other municipalities. Another one where I also want a residence used electronic and phone voting, but without near what we did from a. Uh, voting center point of view too. Um, do you, do you hear that information? Is there a club?
Yes, your worship. Uh, actually, uh, both, um, both AMO and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And, uh, the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers put out data. Uh, but we are, we also go trolling before our election to find out what other municipalities have done. Um, and how they provide their voting methods. So, uh, we can, we can look at. First of all, what kind of voting systems were used. We know that over 50% were electronic. I think we knew that at the outset. Um, and like, for example, I, I read one, I, I'm not sure whether it was New Market, an area, uh, like that and. All the efforts that they had made, uh, to make sure that people, uh, were engaged and were able to vote. I gave the example of, we had a couple of people come into City Hall, uh, to vote and we didn't turn them away. We brought out a laptop for them to vote. Some municipalities, uh, went to an apartment building and had stations at the apartment buildings. Which we are permitted to do, uh, if it's over a certain number. So, uh, but that is to allow people access to voting. Um, they would, uh, have to want to vote as well. So there's, uh, both sides of the equation.
Okay, so that's a help for us to gathering of information so that in a year or two, we can start looking towards. That part, the physical how to vote part. Okay? Great. The, any other? That was, uh, so in, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? I'm tongue tied tonight. I don't know. Yeah.
Uh, your worship, unless there are any further items from the members under corporate governance and administration?
Seeing none.
Council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council. In committee of the whole, as recorded in the minutes of this date, be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
No reports of committees this evening. We'll move into petitions and communications. One item under this committee. Uh, notice has been received from the Catfish Creek Conservation Authority of the Authority's 2023 draft budget. And gen- general levy apportionment. I, your worship, if there's no items of petition and communication from the members, we'll now move into unfinished business of council.
Counselor Wookiee, I see, uh, Mr. Bray has, um. It is now in council chambers. Maybe if you would like to answer, ask your question.
Thank you, worship. Mr. Bray, I was, um, just wanted to follow up with the, the conversation we had on the phone today about ice fishing at Lake Margaret. And, uh, the city's position on that, uh, this winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you. Thanks for your inquiry. Yes, up, per council's request, fishing is permitted. Within the season, uh. Outside the spawning season, which runs from the end of June to the end of November. It's a catch and release in accordance with the MNRF. And it's only on the western portion of the lake, uh, not behind any of the houses.
Thank you.
Great. Any other unfinished business or new business? Seeing none.
Uh, without any new business, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
I have a motion by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor McCauley, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the 12th day of December.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carries, next item, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw 50 dash 88 being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas. This is to remove the holding symbol from the property at 1029 Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? That item carries. Third bylaw, please.
Third and final bylaw is a bylaw to appoint a building inspector, building, uh, bylaw officer and noise control officer, uh, that being Jackson Homes.
Questions or comments? Counselor Herbert, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, is this one person doing all those three positions? And if it is, is it a full-time position for all three? I wasn't sure when I read that.
Mr. Palm Pilly?
Yep, through your worship. Yes, it is one position, a full-time position as a building inspector. Yep. So in, in that role, they, they're responsible for all bylaws.
Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? That item carries. I rise to s- report the successful passing of the three bylaws.
Good work.
I have a motion by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor McCauley, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the three bylaws. Be received and adopted, the same be read a third time and grossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Scared?
Next order of business is public notice. The Corporation of the City of St. Thomas hereby provides notice of its, of its intention to adopt the 2023 operating budget. And 2023 capital budget at its meeting to be held on Monday, January the 9th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. No notices of motion this evening. Uh, your worship, there is, uh, need to move into closed session. At this time, I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed acquisition of land. A matter of litigation, including a matter before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality. And a personal matter about identifiable individuals. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. I will make the same announcement that we usually make at this time. We'll now be going into closed session. To discuss the items the clerk has just s- suggested. We will rise from that closed session only to adjourn. An open session and end the meeting for tonight. So those of you at home, thank you for joining us tonight and we'll see you next week. Uh, for all of, all of the rest, we will now move into closed session with an all in favor vote. Any opposed? Carried.